Good evening, everyone. I'm starting, I'm calling this meeting of the Germantown Board of Education Order at 7:00 PM. I ask that you join me in standing if you're able to say the Pledge of Allegiance and for a moment of silence.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Official meeting notification, Mr. Holmes.
Public notice of all meetings is given by communication from the superintendent's office to those news media who have filed a written request for such notice and the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, and Express News. Public notice has also been posted on all schools and buildings throughout the district, on the school district's website, and on the cable television channel ninety-six.
Thank you. Roll call, Jane.
Sotterberg, Medved, here. Loeb.
Here.
Fordis.
Here.
Barney.
Here.
Speeds.
Here.
Board member Larson, absent.
Thank you. We're on to the approval agenda.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item three, citizen comments. I don't think we have anybody signed up, do we?
Nope.
Would anybody like to speak tonight?
I would.
Come on up. Good evening and welcome. Please state your name.
My name is Rose Dobrogowski. I'm speaking on the behalf of Kurt Raguzzi. I just wanted to say what he had helped me with when he was a Germantown University coach. He believed in me when nobody else gave me the opportunity. Since he was coach my senior year, I accomplished first-team all-conference, second-team all-conference, first-team all-suburban, and honorable mention all-state as a DA. With his help and support, I also now became the JV head coach of Whitefish Bay. And without his support and without his time, I would not have accomplished anything that he did as a coach. So, that's what I said.
Great. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Okay, moving on to item four, approval of the December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen Board of Education meeting minutes, the December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen closed session meeting minutes, and then January fourteen, January fifteen, and January sixteen, two thousand twenty, closed session minutes. Entertain a motion.
Motion approved the minutes from December sixteen, Board of Education, December sixteen, closed session, and January fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, two thousand twenty, closed session.
Do we hear discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item five, reports and information items, student representative report. Mr. Holmes.
Bobby.
On December seventeenth, MacArthur fifth graders went on a field trip to First Stage. MacArthur DI teams competing in the Service Learning Challenge have developed a community service project to benefit a local group that promotes physical activity called the Running Rebels. They organized a basketball skills challenge at the GHES Fieldhouse on January nineteenth. On Wednesday, January twenty-second, the third graders had a field trip to the Shower Arts Center, the fifth graders had a concert, and the kindergarteners went to First Stage. The day before break, on December twentieth, the GHES choir visited Rockfield to sing holiday songs in classes. Rockfield also had Running Reindeer that day, where teachers rotated through all the classrooms and read their favorite holiday stories. On January thirteenth, students dressed up like they were stuck in the eighties. And on the twenty-third, first graders went on a field trip to River Edge Nature Preserve. Throughout the month, Amy Bell fourth graders worked on helping the entire school focus on service and helpfulness through a reflection on the many service activities Amy Bell has done and what can be done in the future. On December seventeenth, fourth graders went to First Stage, and on the nineteenth, first graders had a music concert. The Thanksgiving food drive yielded fourteen large boxes of food which will be distributed locally. The County Line junior art dozens visited the art museum on December thirteenth. The leadership team decorated Christmas cookies with Ellen's home of Germantown residents. On January thirteenth through the seventeenth, the leadership team also had held a pet drive to benefit the Washington County Humane Society. Over the course of the month, students have been focusing on perseverance to add to their empathy training. Kennedy Middle School teachers continue to develop a mentoring program impacting forty students at KMS. The mentors and mentees enjoyed a special holiday lunch and game, and game time together on Monday, December sixteenth. The sixth, seventh, and eighth grade choirs presented a concert at the GHSPAC on January ninth. Selections featured various student vocal soloists as well as a special African drumming accompaniment to one of the eighth-grade pieces. Each house participated in a service project to benefit the community in honor of the memory of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on Monday, January twentieth. And Ski Club had their last outing at Little Switzerland on Wednesday, January twenty-first. Germantown High School, this is a long one. GHES had an exciting week before the start of a long winter break. The annual Winter Wish Week organized by Student Council involves spirit days and deliveries of fuzzy socks, hot chocolate, candy, and donuts to students all over the building. On January eighth, the GHES choir program hosted impromptu, an a cappella group from UWO Claire, and on the eleventh, the choir sang at the Admiral's Game. Powerlifting, palms, hockey, and gymnastics are now in the crucial portion of their competitions. Girls' basketball continues to have a very strong season. GHES Dramatic Impact is putting together their production of Legally Blonde, the musical, which will take place on March sixth through the eighth. Most recently, high schoolers had Exam League, which went just as planned without any weather-related issues this year. And today was the first day of the semester.
Wonderful. Questions, comments from the board? All right, those are more than welcome to stay.
Yeah.
You gotta go, all right?
Yeah.
So, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks, Bobby.
Item B, early graduate update. Mr. Holmes.
Yes, the board annually is informed of the number of students that have qualified for early graduation. Those students have met all the requirements to, to achieve that. I congratulate those three individuals, and their names are released at the same time that all other graduates accomplish that as well. So, it's actually, I was surprised, three is kind of a low number.
It's very low.
Yeah, this year, we're usually average around seven, but this year's group was around three. But I just wanted to give the board an update that you did have three early graduates this year.
Great. Questions, comments from the board? Okay, moving on to item C, elementary attendance boundary parent meeting update.
Can you click on that for me, Rhonda, and open it?
Mr. Holmes.
Yes, I would like to do a report for constituents in the board in regard to how our meeting went. On January eighth, we did hold the district-wide elementary attendries, attendance boundaries public meeting. And seeking input from those people in attendance, we had approximately fourteen individuals in the crowd. It was attended by our Transportation Chair, Tom Barney, Board President Bob Sotterberg, myself, and our district's guide K-12 consultant. In the packet that was provided, I would like to start with the first page in regard to grandfathering and the cost associated with transportation. Those were the two main topics of conversation for the evening. A lot of the fourteen parents were there because of the results that had developed. If by far, the majority of parents who have students that were eligible for grandfathering were wanting to see grandfathering take place for kindergarten through fourth-grade students. There were questions brought up about if we just moved to allow fourth graders to grandfather or no grandfathering at all. They asked for us to contact Rightway to get a more thorough report from them and estimates in regard to those things. Not only did we do that, we also informed the people in attendance that we would have Mr. Erickson do an analysis of the transportation cost and help break those things down to folks so that they could better see that. So, with that information provided to the board, so you would have further data points to consider ahead of making a formal decision on February tenth, I would also, if you would, Rhonda, scroll to the, just start scrolling, and I'll tell you when to stop. Right there. For board members, this was what you decided at your last board meeting ahead of the January eighth meeting. The, most of what was discussed involved this last one year. They were very comfortable in the end that you had arrived at grandfathering for kindergarteners through fifth grade. Not major sticking point at all. What would be the sticking point is that right there, number five on the list. So, the sentiment from my perspective was that the parents, you had a sixty-forty split in regard to the district picking up the cost. Sixty percent of parents want the district to pay, while you have forty percent of those that responded to the surveys that don't want, that want, that they would prefer that they would transport themselves, I guess is the best way to put it. So, at this point, I think that's the sticking point that the board has to work through. I would want Mr. Barney and Mr. Sotterberg to provide their perception of what they saw.
Thank you.
Displayed as it was presented. A lot of parents, I think, that everyone wanted grandfathering. I understand that everyone's attached to their schools and they want to keep their kids in their schools. That it was just a matter of who's going to pay for their transportation. So, I agree. There was a split, some parents that were okay with providing the transportation themselves, and then others felt that one didn't apply.
Did we get confirmation of the cost associated with transportation?
We did. If you'll go back to page.
Go to this page, Rhonda, go back.
Right there. If you would, scroll back down, it's right here. And if you could hit the plus button. Yes, it's right there. As you can see, the trend is moving up. And based on my conversations with Mr. Erickson and his knowledge of school funding and how all those things work, and based on our conversations with Rightway, I would let you know that I don't see that trend going backwards. You know, as a matter of fact, based on the conversations with Rightway and their struggles to find bus drivers and their need to consistently increase the salaries or wages that they pay their bus drivers, you know, transportation costs are going to continue to rise. The, you know, I was surprised, the number of people in the audience for that particular evening that didn't understand that the district's responsibilities in transportation include parochial. You know, a lot of people didn't understand that there's federal laws out there that require public school districts to have to provide that transportation. So, I appreciate Mr. Erickson taking the time to break it down and be able to show the board. You're already spending significant dollars on an annual basis in regard to transportation. And while I understand why transportation's in place, one of the things that I did explain to folks that were there in the audience that night is, and I'll say it for the cameras, Germantown School District does a lot of things in transportation that you don't necessarily get in other school districts. That we are able to separate the student bodies by elementary, middle school, and high school is not commonplace throughout the state of Wisconsin. That we don't have more students walking to school than we do. Germantown, you know, we don't max out and end the buses where we could. I think the board has done an exceptional job. The Transportation Committee's done an exceptional job in keeping riding times down as much as they possibly can, you know. But it's one where, given everything that I currently know about transportation costs and providing those things, you know, you're probably going to have to find ways to start driving down the cost. And given what we know about the school population growing, you know, I see where this is going to continue to only grow. And it's probably going to grow faster than the last ten years have occurred. While you've seen a, almost a nine percent increase over ten years, I think probably over the next ten years, you could see that anywhere from twelve to fifteen percent increase in likelihood.
So, thank you for sharing that. And I think the board and certainly the Transportation Committee is fully aware that you've got nothing but opportunities in the busing and transportation area. But what is the specific increase year-over-year for the grandfathering? Is it the one hundred and sixteen thousand? Right above that?
Three routes.
Three routes?
And it could go down year-over-year for all those students. Your only problem is, is that you have to take into account also that your district is starting to grow, that you're probably going to be adding buses. While those may drop off, you still, based on the demographics that we're seeing, you know, your student populations are about to increase, which generally leads to more buses.
So, the first block that says no grandfathering is Rightway's analysis of what the road school looks like with no grandfathering. So, next year. So, the next two tables, we have to compare to that, which is what the note is underneath the three of them. Compare these tables to the no grandfathering. So, you are correct. The third table compared to the no grandfathering says, and that's one hundred and sixteen, right?
Yeah, one hundred and seventeen, rather, so, okay. And then we'll be deciding that on February tenth, correct?
Mm-hmm.
No, my takeaway from that final meeting, or all the meetings, I just, first, I want to applaud the Transportation Committee for going down this path. Everybody on the team, you know, on the committee did a wonderful job. I truly enjoyed the listening sessions that I participated in. It was great hearing from the moms and dads. I think they appreciated us listening. So, it was good for all. And the last meeting that we had, Jeff, you did a wonderful job in communicating. And I think it's just sharing the news, whether it's good or bad. And, you know, the board's got to make a decision. Do we want to spend one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to transport the kids out of being grandfathered? You know, already, we already know it's going to be a very tight budget here for us. It's a difficult decision, so. But I'm glad that we did, we went down this path. I'm glad that we had the sessions that we did. It's good to know, so. Tom?
You have a question. When you met with Rightway, did they give you any information on what ride times might be, based on, you know, if we did grandfather only fifth grade?
They did. They said that there was some increased ride time. Is that in the footnotes? It's a little small for me to name any of those, even on my own. Did they reference ride time?
The comment in the, in the footnotes is increased in group stops for appropriate terminal timing. Like, that might just be one of their, their methods to try to not make the ride time so much of an increase?
I'm trying to think, Jeff.
I don't think they were specific, but I think we should follow up with Rightway and see if we.
Yeah. So, we're not saying the wrong thing in camera, can we?
Right, because it's no grandfathering versus grandfathering of fifth grade only. The columns are the same, so it's the same number of routes. But if we're adding additional students, there has to be additional ride time. I'm just wondering what that could be.
Well, it goes from, well, there's an additional of three buses.
Three buses if we grandfather first or fifth grade. But the middle column matches the no grandfathering column.
Well, you'll do additional fact-finding and.
Yeah, I hate to say the wrong thing in the camera, but.
Ray and Mike, I know you guys were at the listening sessions as well. Any thoughts, comments, or your feedback?
About the pass?
Yes, we do.
For myself, I know what type the budget is in other areas, and I just cannot see the position, one hundred and seventeen K, and also, we could use those funds elsewhere in budget.
Okay. Any further comments?
All right, thank you, Charles.
You're welcome. Moving on to item six, Finance Committee. Michael?
Yes, the Finance Committee did meet this evening. It was a relatively brief committee meeting, but we did have a presentation, so that adds a little bit of time. Anyway, we approved insurance for cyber insurance coverage for the district. We really did not have to do a motion on it because of what is, the total was under fifteen thousand dollars, so I'm not bringing anything forward for the board. Rick's just willing to do it. He could have done it on his own, but I think he's, you know, at the position where he wants us to have a little more detail on what he's doing and what's going on. So, I was nice and thankful for that, Rick.
Yeah, I would definitely invite those folks back afterwards to update on this type of thing. It's, yeah, it'll involve some training for the whole district.
The only other thing to report is some good news. TID District Four has been retired, and Rick received a check from the Village of Germantown for seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. And we did make some, at first I thought that was going right to fund balance, but we did actually account for those funds. I don't know what it was, one or two were going to be in the, one of them. And that's all we got.
Great. Questions, comments from the board? All right, moving on to item seven, new business. Discussion and action regarding school district property naming rights. Mr. Holmes.
Yes, administrations bring forward two items in regard to naming areas of the Germantown School District properties. Outdoor learning space at Amy Bell Elementary School and the varsity softball field at Kennedy Middle School. In collaboration with the Mashman family and Sandy Dobrogowski, we want to bring forward for board consideration naming of the outdoor learning space at Amy Bell to be the Mashman Nature Center, and the varsity softball field at KMS to be the Kurt Raguzzi Field. We attached additional information for board consideration in your packet. The background information is very self-explanatory. I greatly appreciate the efforts of the Mashman family and also Sandy Dobrogowski in bringing these things forward for your consideration. My recommendation would be to approve the naming of the outdoor learning space at Amy Bell Elementary School, Mashman Nature Center, and varsity softball field at Kennedy Middle School to Kurt Raguzzi Field, with signage for those locations provided through donated private funding, and in accordance with Board Policy seventy-two fifty. We ought, if the board would like to speak to, probably Mr. Mashman first. He's here to answer any questions that you may have. I know that he and Bonnie have been doing some work in terms of looking into signage and what could be placed there.
Do you mind coming forward?
And before he speaks, I do want to remind the board and thank again Mr. Mashman and Bonnie and Mr. Walters as well for working with us in the manner that they did. Had they not moved quickly in regard to this, I think Mr. Mashman and I, we've had conversations over time about, given both of our experiences over the years in these types of things, that we were able to move at lightning speed where that was concerned. So, and I, you know, he and, Mr. Mashman and Ms. Walters are both retirees of Germantown School District. And they have a special place in their heart for seeing the Nature Center evolve into an exceptional outdoor learning space. So, that, Mr. Mashman.
And before you talk, you shared some things when we were out on the field many, many months ago, that I didn't know, that you've got a legacy at Amy Bell School. If you could just share that, too, that would be wonderful.
Excuse me. My family has been involved with Amy Bell School since the Civil War. I went to Amy Bell School with my siblings. My father went to Amy Bell School with his siblings. And my grandfather went to Amy Bell School with his siblings. I grew up on the farm, kitty-cornered from Amy Bell School. So, have had a long history. Three generations of my ancestors were school board presidents. At times, after retired people wanted to be to run for the school board, and they chose to end that streak.
[laughing]
So, it, it was a surprise when this opportunity came up, and you can all be thankful, there are cows still in our barn. The cows are what kept the subdivision from being completed. We knew that the last quarter of that subdivision, Willigate, the people that would want to live there would not want those cows right across. And so, we've held up on that a while. So, that was available. We did take a chance, kind of a risk. We don't know exactly what this change in the subdivision design will cause in the future. But because my family has a long history, and we saw it as an opportunity to help the community, we acted relatively quickly on that one. It went fast. And we chose not to protract negotiations on it and make it happen. And my family, a long history of farmers, after I grew up on the farm and became a teacher, I started traveling. And, you know, when you're milking cows, you can't travel. So, as a youngster, I never got to travel. So, then my wife and I, and then later with our kids, we would go camping in the national parks. Became more interested in nature and combining the school district and the education of youth in the community and our interest in nature seemed like a natural to do this. Any questions?
No, I want to thank you. If it hadn't been for that guy.
[laughing]
Yeah. I think we solved the solution for Amy Bell with the three-track school. And we couldn't have done that without your help and your land. So, I want to thank you on behalf of the Germantown School District for everything that you did. And I think by doing this, by naming this, I think it's a wonderful tribute to your family going forward.
We thank you for that. I'm also thankful for my great-grandparents and my grandparents on the other side of my family. Both grandparents have farms in the area. And it just put us in a position to be able to help out here. And my family history has always been one of trying to help the community, which is, of course, why I became a teacher and a coach. And you mentioned the softball thing. I, too, was varsity softball coach. I think I, I lose track of the years. I think I spent twenty-some years coaching softball in the district. So, it's a, it's a great opportunity to, to give back to the community in my own crude sort of way. I've kind of taken the mantra, if you don't help people when you can, what good are you?
And you certainly helped us, so thank you for that, so.
Yes, I'd like to thank you also, because as Bob said, it was my idea. It's an idea that I floated and sort of blindsided Bob with. But Bob and Jeff really, you know, took on the challenge and talked to you and the two and the three of you, you looked it up. So, I thank you for that, because it, it sort of makes me look good, even though I wasn't the guy. I was only the idea guy. I didn't actually do any of the work. And so, I appreciate that, that this all worked out and we were able to need Amy Bell three-track school. And as you know, we really needed it at this point. If we hadn't kept a three-track school, we would have really been in trouble with our dirties, on boundary, on free drives. And I think at this point, someday if we need to, we can make it a four-track school.
I've heard that.
We'll see, we'll see how it goes. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate the fact that you felt comfortable throwing out a, kind of a, from-left-field, to use that pun, idea. My experience in both on the farm, and then it took me a while to learn, so, get some respect when I was coaching or teaching. respect when I was coaching or teaching, that it's really important for organizations to have free-flowing thinking and allow people to feel comfortable to throw out crazy ideas from time to time. Because once in a while, you have a crazy idea, and you have a crazy idea, and somebody else says, hey, wait a minute, a piece of this and a piece of that, and a piece of something else could be a solution. And I've always appreciated organizations that I've worked with that allowed that to happen.
Wonderful. Other questions, comments? Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your appreciation.
Great.
It's up to the board, boards will, if you want to take this separately or...
Yeah, I think we should do it separately. I'll entertain a motion on the naming rights for the outdoor learning space.
I am due to approve the name of the outdoor learning space at Amy Bell Elementary School to Mashman Nature Center and signage for that location provided through the private funds in accordance with Board Policy seven-two, seven-two five zero.
Second. Discussion. No discussion, sir.
I guess I'm old with these projects, but for the signage, I'd like to see some kind of QR code signed, because we all know what this is about, but future generations may not, and it'd be nice to have that immortalized on our website, or they can just be on it and quote the site and read what, why it's, why the name is on there.
This is a very good idea.
Wonderful idea.
Yeah.
Further comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Holmes?
All right. You have with you tonight also Sandy Dobrogowski, who's led the call to rename Kurt Raguzzi Field. If you would like to go ahead and come on up, please, in case the board has any questions about what was provided in their background documents. Again, like Mr. Mashman, she did a fantastic job of pulling this all together and bringing forward the information that you need in order to make a good, solid decision. So, with that...
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I was very pleased tonight, you've heard, you know, the last two times I was here to speak, and am very pleased tonight to have some alumni players of Kurt's here, as well as current players, our new varsity head coach, parents, and family to support what I have presented. Again, softball is the main, you know, is the impetus of what we're doing here for what this man gave to our girls. But as I said each time I spoke to you, don't forget, what I have in the middle of the presentation here is the community impact that this man had. I don't have to restate it to you, you can see what it is, but he did so much, and I ask you to seriously consider what our ask is, and that is to give him the honor so richly deserved by naming that field the Kurt Raguzzi Field. So, thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Done for me, because it's a wonderful idea.
Come on, you guys, I'm prepared.
I think you gave us everything we needed in the last...
Thank you. Tom, thank you.
And we did meet, and speaking to both projects, I've got very great assurances that both groups, both entities will be able to fund this without any issues whatsoever.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'm due to approve the name of the varsity softball field to Kurt Raguzzi Field with the signage for that location provided through donated private funding in accordance with Board Policy seven-two five zero.
Second. Discussion. I'll just say that I've known Kurt for many, many years. He was the coach of my twin girls. He's a wonderful man. He'll be masterful, so I think this is pretty cool what you're doing, so.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item B, discussion and action to approve open enrollment seats for the 2020, 2021 school year. Mr. Holmes?
Ms. Borst, I'll let you explain it.
First Monday in February through the end of April.